All the meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Marine.
This is Medina.
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Mrs. Rayo?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Mrs. Hatt?
Here.
Thank you, Marine. We'll move on to approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of March 9th, 2020.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 9th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the meeting minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of March 9th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Comments from citizens and delegations. We have one that was emailed in. I'll take a moment to read it. It says, "Hi, thanks very much for giving us the ability to provide some feedback for tonight's meeting. We feel it is important to honor the commitments to your bus companies for the months they are not busing in some way. We are a community and the success of the school district and its busing partners are linked. We worry that any impact to those busing partners could be long-term to the workers and the organizations themselves. Also, we worry about what services may no longer be available in the fall if the busing partners are not able to provide a full complement of drivers and routes. An elongated layoff may make it difficult to rehire qualified drivers and personnel. The funds are budgeted and available, from what we understand, and using them for something else at a time when the community needs to rely on all of its members may be short-sighted. Our sister communities have largely already come to the conclusion that their busing partners are critical elements to the school district, students, and community. I sincerely hope we will follow their lead. Thank you again for your time and consideration, Tim and Heather McElhams." Start out an educational services committee. Looks like the action item one is to approve the co-curricular code of conduct for the 2020-21 school year.
Yep, so the code of conduct is attached for your review. By and large, the changes were as a result of some modifications to the code to align with the trimester reporting, grade reporting periods, rather than the quarter and semester approach, and some language associated with that. There was also some modifications as a result of changes to now what's called, it was the Valley Football Association, which is a separate football-only conference that is impacted throughout the state. That's a statewide initiative, right, John? I think it's statewide.
As far as the Valley Football?
Yep. Well, I mean, it's our conference, but there was a football conference realignment statewide.
Right.
Yes. And that's also included in here. For us, it's not significantly different. Like, I think Hortonville is in, no, somebody's in and the rest stay the same.
Hortonville is the one I think moved.
I don't remember. Anyway, it's one school difference. I apologize for the lack of the memory. And then also, there is felony rule that is incorporated, that is on page nine and highlighted, that is as a result of the WIAA establishing and implementing this felony rule. So this simply aligns with what their language is. And the other aspect that is justification for the changes has to do with a little bit of a reward of earning some time back, as it were. If an individual goes for a 15-month period without a code violation, they can go back a consequence category. And that is found on page 10. So basically, what you're talking about is, there's an example that's provided for you. And a student has a consequence on January 1st, 2020. The student does not have another code violation until April 1st, 2021. The violation on April 2nd, 2021, the student will receive the consequences for a second code violation, rather than a third code violation. So if you maintain 15 months without any issues, you're kind of buying back a consequence. You're going back a level. There'd still be a consequence, it's just not down the echelon of consequences, as it were. And then some information changes about nicotine. That, of course, is to incorporate more along the lines of vapes and other nicotine-containing products that are more, you know, readily available now than they were in the past. It's less about tobacco, more about nicotine products. And then some cleanup on some travel language where it articulates Rams on the 13, page 13, pardon me, and 14, talking about what parents and guardians can do specifically if they want their athlete to ride home with them after an event. Because most of the time, they encourage athletes to ride the bus. If they don't ride the bus, then the parent has to sign a form and provide that to the coach that says, "We're taking the kid." That's what they've been doing in practice. It's now reflected into code.
Yeah, it looks like that's it then for the code changes.
I would make a motion at this time to approve the suggested revisions of the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Co-Curricular Activities Code of Conduct.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the suggested revisions to the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Co-Curricular Activities Code of Conduct. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next item, approve the achievement gap reduction five-year contract renewal.
Yep, so those of you that may not recall or need a refresher, this is the old, what we used to call SAGE, Student Achievement Guarantee in Education. It's now AGR, Achievement Gap Reduction. There's some flexibilities along with the new AGR, and I say new, it's been in place now for four years or five years. And that approach is to offer, boy, oh, boy, my brain is fried today. Must have been the radio interview. It's to offer interventionist opportunities with kids, one-on-one tutoring, and then also class size reduction and coaching. So those aspects can be all rolled in back to provide, to meet needs for kids, rather than just the 18:1 or 36:2, 35:2 technically, old SAGE requirements. We exercise at least a couple of those approaches in each of our buildings, and with an eye on class size, as you folks are always part of. We are not beholden to the 18:1 in K through 3. We try our best to be in that threshold, right around, you know, 17:20, let's call it. And then, of course, we have the interventionist time and the coaches, instructional coaches and so forth. So we employ pretty much every flexibility that the AGR contract offers in varying degrees in different buildings, and the approach is based upon building need. The five-year renewal is just the fact that our prior five years is up, and here we are now with the new five years. There are not any substantive changes either to the statutory requirements under the AGR provision, nor to our approach. It's just approving the new contract for another five-year cycle.
Who is the contractor with?
The DPI in the state.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it wasn't, wasn't totally sure.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools entering into a five-year achievement gap reduction contract.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools entering into a five-year achievement gap reduction contract. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. On item three, motion to approve the nine applications to participate in the 13 requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the Start College Now program.
Pretty status quo if you're an Ed Services Committee member, which we all are. Ed Services Committee will see Start College Now and Early College Credit Program applications. They're listed there for you, both by number, grade level, and the name of the course that the students will be engaged in. No changes to that program. Marine is silently applauding the fact that that's been mellow for maybe six months or four months. Because if you recall, Start College Now and Early College Credit used to be youth options and
Course options.
And course options, pardon me, and other agreements with our higher ed partners. So I guess barring any questions, pretty much status quo, and we're gonna keep doing what we're doing.
And I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the nine applications to participate in the 13 requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the Start College Now program in the fall of 2021 school year.
Second, then.
We have a motion to second to approve the nine applications to participate in the 13 requested courses at Midstate Technical College through the Start College Now program in the fall of the 2020-21 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
And I'd follow up with the recommendation, or make the motion to recommend approval of the one application to participate in the one requested course at UW-Milwaukee-Waukesha through the Early College Credit Program in the fall of 2021 school year.
Second, then.
A motion to second to approve the one application to participate in the one requested course at UW-Milwaukee-Waukesha through the Early College Credit Program in the fall of the 2020-21 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And then we have updates.
So the first update for you is under Attachment B, when we're talking the 18, 19 results from District AP exams, and then ACT is the second page of Attachment B. So the information, along with how we rate among local districts, in addition to the state of Wisconsin, are provided there for you. AP exam participation by all students is the first graph provided for you. We see that our percentage is lower than I think we'd like to see that. Ron Rasmussen, LHS principal, and I, in addition to Roxy Filts and Jen Willhorn, have had some conversations around AP test participation. Now, keep in mind, this is not course participation, it's participating in the test. You don't have to take the test. So you can take an AP course and just take it for credit and no test, and therefore, no potential ramifications with respect to college credits and that kind of thing. That's individual student or student-parent choice. We've talked about ways to incorporate or increase participation. Some of the things that cause students to not participate is, well, I don't want to do poorly. And there's no requirement that you do it. You still get a course grade. You can still, you know, get an A in the course and have that be on your transcripts. I just don't want to stress over the test. And so think of it from the perspective of like, the nature of students that take an AP test. These are kids that are pretty academically gifted. They have a number of courses that probably weigh heavy on their psyche with respect to being properly prepared. I say that because these aren't the kids typically that are going to go in and just mail it in and give it a shot. If it was like a mandatory test, a state test, you might just say, "Oh, what the heck? I mean, I'll give it a shot." In this regard, these are kids that are typically high achievers, who if they're going to take a test, they're going to put 100% into it. And I might say for one AP class versus, you know, of the four that I'm taking, I'm going to forego the test in this topic, just to decrease that anxiety and those issues. Other reasons would be, sometimes the trimester schedule causes a little bit of an issue for students. They finish an AP course and the test isn't offered till May, so they could finish it term two. And the test isn't offered till May, and that is, you know, a six-week or potentially longer break between when the course is done and when the AP test is offered. So that's cited by students for why they don't take the test. Lincoln High School does provide, though, sessions that help, you know, kids with those skills to stay sharp. So they try to offset that to a degree. And so determining ways that we can increase test participation, the reason being is that, like I'd say to my own kids, you know, what's the worst that's going to happen? The test has no impact on you in a negative fashion. It can only have an impact in a positive fashion in terms of college credits or, well, pretty much college credits, you know, is the route that an AP exam will get you. And it's the idea of figuring out ways to remove some of those anxieties for kids, so that they give it a shot. And, you know, why not, again, because worst-case scenario, nothing happens. Best-case scenario, you get three credits or more. And the timing with regard to how we put AP courses into the trimester schedule, and trying to isolate many of those towards terms two and three, or three, if at all possible, so that kids are engaged in that course prior to taking the exam. Then you talk about percentage of kids getting three or above, so that's the second graph there. You can see that we're well within what a threshold would be towards the higher end of that threshold here locally and throughout the valley, and also the same as the state of Wisconsin. Moving on to the next page, you can see some of the data for ACT information. The first graph is how our two schools, Lincoln High School and River Cities, compare, and then the district combined of 20.3. And then at the second graph, you can see how the comparisons among local school districts, as well as districts in the valley, how Lincoln High School are, pardon me, both Lincoln and River Cities compare amongst other schools in the valley and in the area. There, too, I would simply point your attention to the fact that the scale, for reference, only starts at 18% and goes to 22%, meaning it's a fairly, you know, constricted frame, but that also makes it look, you know, like we're at 20.3 as an example, and Marshfield's at 21.5. It looks like there's a pretty big difference between those two bars. Well, there really is. You know, you're talking 1.2 in difference. And I don't cite that just to pick on Marshfield, I'm just saying, as a point. So there you go.
Okay. We want to touch base at all on the AP exam updates?
Oh, absolutely.
See?
Yes. So one of the questions that may be out there as a result of the school closure because of the governor's order would be, how do these AP tests get taken if you don't have kids in a classroom? And ultimately, what AP has done is move to an online format, and the school has been communicating with kids that are in these AP classes, kids and parents, to get those things set up and facilitated. And the student would be taking that AP exam online from home or at an alternate location that the parents and student would be comfortable with. So there's very little, aside from coordination, that we do, as far as the school's concerned. We simply facilitate that happening, and they get it set up and take it at their convenience during an open window of time. And it's online, and then they submit it, and they should get the results back, just like normal, as if they took it in person here at Lincoln High School.
Is that, is that, doing anything similar for ACT testing? Because I know Lincoln does those multiple conferences. Or are they just canceling that right now?
So I don't know about anything that make up times that have been rescheduled. My guess to answer that would be yes, but I don't know that for a fact. And we had all of our, the standard ACT suite checked off the list prior to the closure. So we're not, our juniors and seniors in particular are not behind the ball, as it were. There might be some that want to do a makeup or a retake, and that would be facilitated, I would guess, online, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
Oh, I should also mention that if there's kids with limited connectivity or issues around technology, the school and AP will work with that family to figure something out and get it accomplished. If we have to get them a computer or hotspot for taking the exam and so forth, then we can do that.
Great. The next item, the middle school schedule update.
So you may recall that we had some schedule modifications that transpired when the eighth grade was sent to Rams, making it now a 6'8" building in the closure of East. When I first arrived here, you also probably remember that they ran two different schedules here at East for the last year that East was in existence. They ran an eighth-grade schedule, and then they ran a ninth-grade schedule. The eighth-grade schedule aligned more with what they were doing at Rams. The ninth-grade schedule aligned more with what they were doing at Lincoln. And then, you know, worked some bugs out by virtue of having that happen in the same building. Those kids then went to their respective buildings, ninth to Lincoln and eighth to Rams. And then the schedules were implemented, as it were. If you're a ninth grader, it was the Lincoln High School schedule, not really a big deal. If you were an eighth grader, it was a schedule that's slightly different than what sixth and seventh grade, not terribly different, but slightly different than what sixth and seventh grade encountered. One of the concerns that arose from that modified schedule was for eighth-grade students in particular, where some students would have to choose between band or a foreign language. And there was some commentary around, the nature of these kids are similar, so that if I'm a band kid, I'm probably more inclined to be wanting to do foreign language earlier in my school career. And when I say this, I mean, like, introductory or high school level, freshman year sort of foreign language opportunities at the middle school versus, because kids do get some exposure to foreign languages while at Rams that are not just taking like Spanish one, for example. And so since last year concluded, which was the first year that we largely had a 6'8" building, you know, at Rams, and the schedule implemented, the conversation took place around, hey, can we rectify this issue? And that stemmed from a conversation, I believe, at the CII, the Curriculum Committee, the broad CII level, that discussed, that includes staff and some community members and a board rep, but discussed some possibilities about, is that something that we can rectify for kids at Rams? And that then engaged in some commentary around, yep, I think there's some options. And then there was a proposal that was brought forward that did allow for that, but by virtue of that proposal, it kind of had broader ramifications on other aspects of choices for kids as well. So it disadvantaged, in some people's opinion, the art and the music program to a degree. And so it was a little bit of a, okay, this isn't going to work, and we're getting worried about it. So after a little bit, we said, okay, hold up a sec. What are we actually attempting to rectify here? Because I think we're at a good point to look at Rams as a 6'8" building and say, is this the most effective schedule we can run? So Tracy, having heard and been part of multiple conversations with respect to the schedule, said, you know what, I'll develop a commission of staff members to investigate some possible opportunities for kids, and we'll talk about the schedule 6'8", and we'll kind of work through it during the course of what was the tail end of last school year and now into this school year, and provide a recommendation. So what she provided as a synopsis here is that a commission of 22 staff member volunteers, including two Lincoln High School representatives, formed to review the Rams' schedule. The group decided to survey the eighth-grade class while they registered for Lincoln High School and the middle school staff for feedback. So they surveyed the eighth-grade students that are current eighth graders and the staff. The student survey revealed, given a choice of two electives in eighth grade, the majority of students would choose study hall as their other elective, meaning neither band nor foreign language, they would choose study hall. Those that took a language plan to stick with it at Lincoln High School, meaning if I take a language in eighth grade, I'm going to do it again probably when I go into ninth grade. Only 16% reported being dissatisfied with the middle school schedule as-is. Complaints included not having friends in classes and locker location, to which is not atypical. Two subgroups are working on incorporating a Wednesday activity, homeroom advisory time to better align with Lincoln's late start, and a refocus on middle school philosophy. So like graduated weighted grades is an example of that. And then she ends by saying, in sum, the recommendation of the commission was to maintain the current schedule, an elective choice for eighth graders, but incorporate a weekly activity period. So by and large, the commentary that they found through the entirety of this rigmarole, which as I indicated lasts for probably about 12 months, give or take, is that there are some complications, but they're less so in terms of student concern, and primarily also in terms of making changes that have ultimate ramifications elsewhere throughout the schedule. So that, the recommendation is that that Rams' schedule would remain as-is, and the kids' choices for eighth grade would be similar to the they are now. However, modifying the Bell's schedule for implementation next year, where there would be a homeroom or a, you know, a raider time, raider pride time, they call it at Lincoln High School, but an eagle time, they call it here at East, something similar, where we can, you know, develop some additional activities that smaller groups of kids and staff can engage in.
It's not an easy subject, though.
No. No, and oddly enough, too, there's also, not that this entered into the decision-making for kids, but the schedules aligning to a degree between Rams and Lincoln High School is significantly more beneficial for some of our traveling staff, because we do have the late start at Lincoln on those Wednesdays creates some unique issues for staff that travel between Rams and Lincoln, because Rams didn't do a late start on Wednesdays as of this year. So.
Okay. Last item under Ed Services, and various curriculum acquisition procedures stated for the upcoming year.
Yes, and I probably should have mentioned for the viewers and for you folks, I apologize that this is just me talking the whole time. But what it comes down to is, our administrative team, under my direction, I said, you know what, in order to comply, and let's make certain that we don't have more people in the room than necessary, I'll take care of it. And so there may be things that, I have had a conversation with every administrator that's got something here, but there may be additional questions that you might have, and certainly say, hey, I want to know this. And worst-case scenario, I'll write it down, get you an answer after the fact. But that's why I'm going to be long-winded and talk to all these agenda items. So my apologies for that. Although I do like to talk, I mean, people know that. So item E, acquisition of materials, elementary, there's three things that are going on right now with regard to curriculum adoption. Elementary math, elementary social studies, and world language. Roxy, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, went to these groups and said, okay, in the light of the circumstance, it's pretty tough to get together, dig in the materials, and do some of the things that we've got, that we normally do with regard to curriculum adoption. So she spoke with those coordinating the elementary math, and their plan is to pilot this elementary math curriculum next year, and that the purchase would not occur until '21, '22. So you're not going to see an elementary math purchase that'll be pushed off one year. The plan was to purchase and implement that next. I can't imagine there's a number of teachers at the elementary that are in tears over that. Some want to move, which means they can, because we'll pilot it. The pilot will most likely be voluntary. And I'm sure we'll get a decent uptake, because it's time for some new math at the elementary level. But, and when I say new math, new math curriculum, not the new math, we're not doing Koopie stuff. But implement, then, fully implement in '21, '22. Elementary social studies, you've heard elementary social studies work have been gone on at least since last year, and of course, into this year. Their plan is to come with a proposal for a curriculum purchase December of 2020. So you'll see that next late fall slash winter season, and that will be for implementation whenever we get the materials through the remainder of next year and then beyond. World language, they were the group that came to the table and said, we're ready to go. However, that does mean that there's some modifications to our normal protocol, because typically they go through a few internal committees, the CII committee as an example, before coming to the board. And that will happen, but it's not going to happen in the same kind of continuity and normal timeline, as it were. But people will get a kick at the can. The world language staff have said, nope, we're ready to rock, so you tell us what's the earliest we can purchase and implement. And so they've settled in October. So it'll come to CII in September, and then you'll see a board proposal for approval in October of next year. So they're ready to roll. Those were the three areas that were kind of up in the air and in process. And those are the modifications.
Can you talk about the forward exam?
Oh, my apologies, we skipped that. So the forward exam is going to be, well, we're not going to have, is the, you know, straight and easy way to say that. And the reason being is that the state has applied for and will be granted a waiver, and they may have already been granted a waiver from the federal government around accountability. There's a number of things that are up in the air, and we're going to hear about this probably throughout the board meeting. But the fact that this waiver is out there and our state's going to apply is not up in the air. It's a thing that's going to happen, which means our kids and the accountability around that will not be held to that same standard. Our state-level testing is as a result of our waiver with the federal government to say, here's what we're doing with respect to accountability. State-level testing, school report cards, and all of this suite of things you folks have heard about. The waiver allows the state to suspend that, and that request has to be made after the legislature acts. So that's actually happening now. This is part of these packages they're talking about in this extraordinary session, this special session. And we'll see what the details are with respect to how this, you know, materializes in forms of statutes. But nonetheless, the feds have offered the waiver. The state will apply for a waiver with regard to the forward exam, and our kids will not have to take it. And from the sounds of it, there will not be any kind of school accountability report card developed for the schools throughout the state this year either. So that's pretty much, I don't know, clean slate, we don't have to do it. And that's one of the few things that's actually quite clear right now. That and the instructional minimum waiver, which we're going to talk about on our new business. Thank you, Katie, for bringing that back around.
That takes care of the Ed Services portion. We can move on to Business Services. First item, action to approve the purchase of a used 2018 Caterpillar Bobcat Skid steer with attachments. Sounds like fun.
Well, you can imagine Ed wanted to be here. I said, Ed, don't worry about it. But here's the interesting aspect of this. If you recall, we had a significant amount of storm damage from the storm that came through. And when I say significant, it paled in comparison to some other areas of the city and so forth. But it's still to the tune of over $100,000 in damage in trees, some property damage, not a ton, but nonetheless, over $100,000. We were unclear whether or not we'd get any FEMA reimbursement dollars, and we have now found that we get some FEMA reimbursement dollars to about $100,000 worth. And what Ed has requested is that this $58,000 proposal for a used Bobcat is where those dollars are going to come from. So it's not a budgeted item that was planned, but there is revenue, unexpected or unanticipated revenue in the form of this FEMA relief, that this would be, you know, technically coming out of. The question might be, what do you do with the Bobcat? Snow removal in smaller spots is one area, and then, of course, all of the playground stuff with wood chips moving here and there. Anytime you need to do dirt work, the grounds crew, the builders and grounds crew are going to use this, I don't know, I'm not going to say daily, but quite frequently. What we do now is either use some other piece of equipment that might not be completely fit for the bill, or we pay the dollars to rent one. This one is, if you look at the bid, is pretty much like new. I want to say it's $300 or $320, or something like that. So barely used in a bargain at 58K. Because a brand-new one, you're probably talking Because a brand-new one, you're probably talking 80? 70 to 80?
No, and it's coming with.
A number of attachments.
It's got a broom attachment, a snow blower attachment, and fork attachment, so it's going to be at multiple purpose uses for him, too.
Correct.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of a proposal, proposed purchase of the 2018 Caterpillar Bobcat Skid Steer with attachments for a total cost of $58,000 from Ziegler Incorporated, to be funded from the building and grounds budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the proposal to purchase one 2018 Caterpillar Bobcat Skid Steer with attachments for a total cost of $58,000 from Ziegler Incorporated, to be funded from the building and grounds budget. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Next item, action to approve of a three-year Skyward technology contract renewal.
Yeah, so you can see, the chart that's provided for you there is a breakdown of what we're paying for, you know, per module, as it were, and how it compares to our last three-year pricing from 2017. There is a 2020 one-year pricing, which is the far right column, and I think you can see very quickly by looking at the three-year pricing, there's a significant cost savings to go with a three-year versus the one-year, but nonetheless, we're talking about all of the things that you guys are already familiar with, with respect, pardon me, to student management, support of that software package, fee tracking, special ed, notice the asterix, it's been removed because by prior board action, we transitioned over to a different special ed program, so that's actually a net savings. The LMS One Roster API, food service, and you'll see the two asterix there, because that's actually paid for out of Fund 50, and so our total is $9.09 per pupil. In the past, in 2017, it was $8 per pupil, when it's all said and done. So some of that is because of new things that we're purchasing, and some of that is because the price went up just slightly, and of course, we dropped a thin or two. So making a modification from our current pupil management software would not be a great choice, particularly in the light of our circumstances now, but that would be a transition in a plan we would look to engage in in a more of a long-term fashion if we were ever to entertain that. Skyward is a fairly, a fairly highly-ranked student management system to work with, and it's quite common throughout the state of Wisconsin and throughout the country, but most schools from the state work with Skyward, and Skyward interfaces directly with the DPI, the federal government, and so forth and so on. So there's multitudes of reasons to hang on to what we've got.
Plus, it also aligns traces with the newer waste program that we used.
That's correct.
We do need it.
I would make a motion to approve the renewal of the Skyward contract for the services listed in the shaded 2020 pricing, three-year pricing column with an annual cost to the district per year of $9.09 per student, based on the annual Third Friday pupil count to be funded through various district accounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the renewal of the Skyward contract for the services listed in the shaded 2020 pricing, three-year pricing column, and an annual cost to the district per year of $9.09 per student, based on the annual Third Friday pupil count, to be funded through various district accounts. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Next item, motion to approve proposal to purchase 120 Meraki wireless access points from PDS.
Yep, so as you can see in your background, they're looking to upgrade wireless points, wireless access points, pardon me, at Lincoln High School and Rams, and utilizing some of the, here we go, losing my train of thought, federal E-rate dollars to cover the cost of that purchase of upgrading the wireless. The thought process is about 80% of the funding would come from federal E-rate dollars that can be submitted for, and then 20% from the 2021 budget, and I think that for the most part covers it. Yep.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the proposal to purchase 120 Meraki wireless access points from PDS for a total cost of $86,594.40, to be funded at 80% from federal E-rate program pending approval, and 20% from the 2021 technology budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve proposal to purchase 120 Meraki wireless access points from PDS for a total cost of $86,594.40, to be funded at 80% from the federal E-rate program pending approval, and 20% from the 2020-21 technology budget. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. And then it looks like we have updates and reports on the purchases of library media, equipment for technology education, and library media. Is all listed? Purchase of 107 Chromebooks for use at Rams and contract agreement with Compass Care for the 2020-21 school year. That has to do with Medicaid billing, correct?
That's correct.
The Chromebooks, last, our last meeting, Phila brought up the fact that they were getting tight on inventory due to the coronavirus in China and all of the issues there, so they were scrambling to get Chromebooks at pricing, at the reduced pricing before it went up, as well as just getting them because the demand was greater than the volume.
Yes.
Okay, that should take care of the Business Services Committee. Personnel Services, item on, action to approve of a support staff early retirement request.
For his status quo, you can see the request, it's listed there, for early retirement.
I would make a motion to approve the support staff early retirement request of Darlene Ashbeck effective March 10, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the support staff early retirement request of Darlene Ashbeck effective March 10, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Staff Resignation Request.
I would make a motion to approve the professional staff resignation request of Tom Tong Zhan, effective March 12, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the professional staff resignation request of Tom Tong Zhan, effective March 20, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item, Staff Resignation Request.
I would move to approve of a support staff resignation request of Sarah Bean, effective March 5, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the support staff resignation request of Sarah Bean, effective March 5, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Approved Board Policy 345.11, Procedures for Academic Excellence Scholarships for Second Reading.
Yes, if it's second reading, I make a motion to approve of a sort of support staffer, oh, excuse me, motion to approve Board Policy 345.11, Procedures for Academic Excellence Scholarships for Second Reading.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve Board Policy 345.11, Procedures for Academic Excellence Scholarships for Second Reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Approved Board Policy 423, Public School Open Enrollment for Second Reading.
I would make a motion to approve Board Policy 423, Public School Open Enrollment for Second Reading.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve Board Policy 423, Public School Open Enrollment for Second Reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item is motion to approve Board Policy 423 Rule.
I'd make a motion to approve Board Policy 423 Rule, Procedures for Processing Public School Open Enrollment Applications for Second Reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Board Policy 423 Rule, Procedures for Processing Public School Open Enrollment Applications for Second Reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we can move into the public hearing portion. Looks like Item A is the waiver of the requirements of Wisconsin statutes 121.02, Parents 1 and F, and the Administrative Rules promulgated by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction regarding required instructional hours for students for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
So this is what you heard I alluded to earlier. Under statute, we are required to hold what's considered a public hearing, and that's what we're doing right now, meaning it has to be posted as a public hearing and held in a public capacity, which of course was what we're doing. The waiver would allow us to then suspend the requirements of minutes of instruction, and we would not get into the nuance of conversations around how do we make this time up. So if you recall, the most recent issue we had around minutes of instruction would be last year, oddly enough, but not due to a pandemic, but due to a number of winter closures because of the polar vortex. We had eight closures last year, and we had to make up days because the state indicated they would not honor any waivers, even given the circumstance that we had, you know, the two cold days, and I think every school in the state are pretty near, every school in the state was shut down. Nonetheless, they wouldn't allow said waivers. In this regard, the state is allowing the waivers of the instructional minutes, which would mean that from the time the closure took place to whenever the closure ends, those wait, those, in fact, through the end of the school year, pardon me, those minutes would be waived, meaning we do not have to require, in order to maintain funding from the state and from the feds, we don't have to require students to come back or make up days. So there will be, if this is approved here at the board and approved by DPI, which they provided every assurance it would be approved, that, that's what that means, that there's really no ramifications for having school closed for a prolonged period of time. There are some potential ramifications, for example, at the high school level, which is still being worked through, because kids need credits for graduation, and students need grades reported to transcripts for colleges and other institutions and choices they choose to make after leaving. Aside from that, K8 or pre-K8, it basically means there's, there's no ramifications. I can dispel any rumors that there are out there, there was a pretty cruel April Fool's joke, as it were, that transpired on April 1st, where the WASB had supposedly made a statement in conjunction with the governor, or something like that, that students would be to require or repeat the grade they were in this year, next year. That actually got some airtime, that is absolutely not true, and what's interesting is, you know, we'll provide some, I intend to provide a district communication based on your action here this evening, sometime this week, it'll go probably tomorrow or Wednesday, and before that goes, you guys will get a copy or when it goes. But part of the commentary will be about this instructional minute waiver and what that really means, and frankly, it doesn't mean anything, it doesn't mean a ton with regard to how we're doing business now, because I think the goal is engagement, and what we're going to do long-term if this goes all the way till the end of April or end of May, or God only knows how long this goes until. It's about student engagement and parent engagement and working with our families in a cohesive format. This is, I would argue, kind of a foregone conclusion. I mean, if we chose not to waive the minutes of instruction requirement, we would have to require kids and students to come back and make up the number of days that we've missed thus far, less three or four, which already are built-in days. I think everybody knows that that would be quite crazy, but by statute, they've already pared down what the process is and streamlined the process by making some modifications, and so upon your action, all we do is go in, put our school district name, the date the public hearing was held, which would be today, and bottoming, we're pretty much good to go, is from what we understand, and that suspends the minutes of instruction requirement, as well as some other contact requirements that we have with parent contact in our early childhood program and parent contact in pre-kindergarten, so.
Okay. Do we have to go through to the public comment part before?
Yes.
Okay. So Item B is the waiver of the requirements to complete an educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summer year in 1920, including waivers of the requirement to meet PI 8.01 and Wisconsin Statute 115.415 and 121.02, Parents 1 and Q for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Right, so that secondary waiver that's also proposed is to waive the educator effectiveness requirements. Those are aspects that, too, come from federal regulations and requirements for state accountability, and then state implementation locally. What that is, is the mechanism by which we evaluate our professional or licensed staff. So you've heard of My Learning Plan or MLP, that's what that is, that's the, that's the interface that we use, the software, the program that we use, to do the professional staff evaluations. With this being suspended, if in fact you agree with providing the waiver, it just ensures that we don't, we're not beholden to the requirements of the educator effectiveness protocol. In some cases, we're able to wrap this up for staff, in other cases, we may not be able to, because again, if we, you know, have been out of school for now, you know, four weeks, including spring break, and then it goes all the way until May, you can't physically wrap up an evaluation with a teacher by being in their classroom, there's no classroom to be in, or by evaluating data, there may not be student data that's generated. And so that waiver would be, just simply make life easier for the district in the short term, saying that we're choosing to waive those requirements of the, of the teacher evaluation system. I should emphasize, that doesn't mean that staff were not evaluated, because some staff have went through the process and will go through the evaluation process just like normal, because things were pretty much wrapped up prior to the closure, and this is just a tie-up, any loose ends of staff that wouldn't be able to finish that, that process or that, those protocols.
Okay. I guess that's open for public comment, but we don't have any, so we can then move on to the.
Okay, then I would make a motion to approve of a resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the instructional hours requirement of Wisconsin Stats 121.02, Parents 1 and F, and the Administrative Rules promulgated by the Department regarding required instructional hours for students for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve of a resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the instructional hours requirements of Wisconsin Statute 121.02, Parents 1 and F, and the Administrative Rules promulgated by the Department regarding required instructional hours for students for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes. Thank you, Marine, and last item, E.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve of a resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive requirements to complete an educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summer year in 2019-20, including waivers of the requirements to meet PI 8.01, Wisconsin Statute 115.415 and 121.02, Parents 1 and Q for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve of a resolution to submit a request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive requirements to complete an educator effectiveness cycle for educators in their summer year in 2019-20, including waivers of the requirement to meet PI 8.01 and Wisconsin Statute 115.415 and 121.02, Parents 1 and Q for the 2019-20 school year only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. We have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Looks like we can move on to Agenda Referrals, Information Requests. Does anybody have anything as well?
I do have one, John. In our AFL Second Board Packet, Marine had included, for tries, it's because he was a new board member, the board policy and the memorial and flowers, our current position, our practice on that, and I guess I didn't, I looked at it, and I didn't realize that we did for retired administrators and retired board members, so I just asked Marine, and we actually did this, this, updated it in 2009, I believe it was, so I guess I'm just wondering what the thought is, and if we could talk about it, maybe it makes sense to do the active employees and/or students, and maybe move away from doing the retired administrators and retired board members, since over time, boards change, leaderships change, and, you know, if people still wanted to, to do it on their own, they could if they knew that particular one, and it's just a thought, if it's, if somebody, you know, if you want, you think it's important to do as a board, I'm fine with that, but I thought maybe to look at that.
Put it on the agenda for next month. Are there any other Agenda Referrals or Information Requests? Should we can move on to the Legislative Agenda?
So this month, so this month, wait a month, we'll take a look at some bills, bills before various committees of the Assembly and the Senate, and then we'll, we'll lead up, I'll finish with getting us to tomorrow in terms of what action the legislature, our legislature is taking in terms of dealing with managing this crisis. So I'm going to start going back to March 11th, which is just a couple days after our last, last month's report. On March 11th, the Assembly Committee on Health and Human Services, which is chaired by our own Senator Patrick Testan, held a public hearing on March 11th. own Senator Patrick Testan, held a public hearing on March 11th to take testimony on Senate Bill 364. I know I've mentioned this, this bill and reports passed. This bill raises the legal age for sale, purchase, and possession of cigarettes and nicotine and tobacco products from the age 18 to 21. This public hearing was held on March 11th, and WASP has come out in support of Senate Bill 364, which was authored by Senator Howard Merkline of Spring Green and Representative John Spiros of Marshfield. WASP supports this bill based on our member-approved resolutions and provided a sample resolution for boards to use to express their support for this bill on the Board's Taking Action webpage. In addition, the Health and Human Services Committee took up Assembly Bill 422. This is the companion to Senate Bill 364. Assembly Bill 422 has already passed the Assembly on a voice vote. Senate action is needed to get T 21, or Tobacco 21, bill to the governor's desk. Without state action, local law enforcement will be unable to enforce the recently enacted federal age restriction, making it harder to keep vaping products out of the hands of schoolchildren and out of our schools. On March 17th, T 21 passed committee on a four to one vote, but on April 1st, it failed to pass pursuant to Senate Joint Resolution 1, which effectively stalls the bill as of this time, which is a shame because it did have quite a broad coalition of support. Twenty-eight groups came out in support of this bill, just to name a few, American Heart Association, American Lung Association. I'll jump down to the Wisconsin Dental Association, Wisconsin Primary Healthcare Association. So this did have a lot of traction behind it, but unfortunately, April 1st, that was effectively stalled as of as of now. In moving to the Senate Committee on Education, held its final meeting of the session back on March 11th as well, and it was also, to note, it was also the final meeting with Senator Luther Olson as the chairman. He's chaired that committee for quite a number of years and is not running for reelection this fall. The Senate Committee on Education met on Wednesday, March 11th as well, and they took up multiple bills. Senate Bill 789, which is authored by Senator Alberta Darling and Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, Jeremy Theisvelt, authored Senate Bill 789, which expands the part-time open enrollment program and renames it the Course Choice Program. The identical companion bill, Assembly Bill 849, already passed the Assembly, so this committee hearing could clear the way for the Senate to concur in the bill. Concurrence by the Senate in this version of the bill passed by the Assembly would send it to Governor Evers' desk. In terms of Senate Bill 789, WASP has come out in opposing this bill for a number of reasons in its current form. The first reason for opposing this bill is it expands the program to courses at all grade levels without addressing how courses are defined in elementary grades, or how parents will transport young children from one school to the other in order to participate. In opposition, another reason, it does not address how public schools are to treat existing statutes that already allow private high school students and homeschooled students to attend up to two courses in a public school district, and also it doesn't require background checks for all those teaching course choice classes. Also on their hearing agenda on March 11th, Senate Bill 506, this relates to grants to the Wisconsin Safe and Healthy School Center and making an appropriation. WASP has come out in support of Senate Bill 506. Just in short, this bill provides $70,000 in 2019-20 and $20,000 in 2020 to 2021 for this grant known as the Wisconsin Safe and Healthy School Center, which is currently housed in CISA 4 in West Salem. The third bill that came out of this this committee back on the 11th is Senate Bill 744. This relates to incorporating the Holocaust and other genocides in the state model social studies standards and requires instruction on the Holocaust and other genocides. Our neighboring representative Katrina Shanklin was added as a cosponsor to Senate Bill 744 on March 19th. So that all came out of the Senate Committee on Education. And it'll be interesting to see next year how that committee changes, because Luther Olson, some good, some bad, but he was a driving force out of that committee, so it'll be interesting to see in terms of education leaders going forward in that committee. As we know, schools are closed for instructional and extracurricular activities for the duration of this public health emergency. Originally, schools had a tentative return date of April 6th, but from the governor's office, the full release and the new emergency order are from the governor's office as the statewide closures become indefinite in terms of dealing with this public health emergency. As we mentioned earlier tonight, on March 20th, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction announced updated guidance to school districts regarding the continuity of learning amid the spread of COVID-19 and the closure of public and private schools. Among policies covered in the guidance, the DPI will waive a state mandated hour requirement to districts requesting to do so during the ongoing public health emergency. More information and a full news release is available on the dpi.wisconsin.gov in terms of this waiving, waiving of hours from the 20th. Lastly, in terms of Senate business, the Senate Majority Leader Scott Fitzgerald postponed the late March State Senate floor session. This was scheduled to take place March 24th to the 26th. In a, in a quote, "The Wisconsin State Senate will continue to function during this public health emergency. After discussions with Speaker Boss, the legislature will call an extraordinary session this spring so the Senate can complete our business." And I'll, I'll end with with that, but that is actually happening tomorrow, that extraordinary session. Last Tuesday, April 7th, voters decided on a number of races, local school board, nonpartisan local contests, a state Supreme Court race, and they cast the presidential preference vote. Final results are trickling in this evening as the clerks continue to report. And I checked about 5:30 when I left, it was, results were pouring in relatively quickly, so we should, we should know in the local level in terms of how the mayor's race shakes out and how other races on the ballot. But I wanted to take a moment to congratulate John and Sandy for
You know something, we don't.
For, for running, for their reelection. And I also just want to say it's, it's a really good board that we have here, so we have to
Thank you.
That holds, that holds a lot of weight, and we have to be mindful that we do have a good, good group, good group of people here.
Appreciate that, it's very humbling considering what happened last week, the number of people that cast their ballots that went to the polls in spite of everything that happened. It says something about democracy that people were willing to, you know, in some cases, maybe put their life on the line to go cast the ballot and stand in line for hours and hours and hours, and it's very humbling. So it speaks well to the democracy that people hold very dear in this country.
Yeah, the uncertainty of this whole cycle has sure been something, yes.
Should clarify for the viewers at a later time as well, there was two vacant seats and two people running, which is how we know, which is how we know they've retained their seats, just for clarity, yeah.
Well, at least we hope.
Yeah, we're only aware.
You think you got negative votes, is that what you're saying?
And on that point, on Wednesday, on this Wednesday at 3:00 PM is the canvas of election results for the school board to, to solidify an official, make that process official this Wednesday. Turning over to federal legislation, the U.S. Senate on March 18th passed the Federal Coronavirus Aid Package, which was approved earlier in that week by the U.S. House of Representatives. This measure went to President Trump, who signed it into law. Senators voted 90 to 8 on the bill, which is known as H R 6201, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, that had previously passed the House of Representatives. The Joint Committee on Taxation estimates the measure will cost about $104 billion. It is the second emergency supplemental appropriations, appropriations package that Congress has passed amid growing concerns about the outbreak and the impact it is having on our economy. H R 6201 includes provisions addressing emergency food assistance, including waiter and funding authority for school meal programs, free coronavirus testing, expanded family and medical protective leave, protected leave, and paid leave, including tax credits for some employers, extended unemployment insurance, and increased medical reimbursement for states. And that was March 18th, that the U.S. Senate passed that on a very bipartisan fashion. April 10th, WASP issued a legislative call to action and an alert they sent out, take action. WASP and our partners at the National School Boards Association encourage you to contact your members of Congress to urge their strong support for the resources and guidance our school districts need in order to provide a reasonable level of continuity in special education services to students with disabilities educated under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, during this coronavirus pandemic. They are just to take action as there's two, two underlying problems, two key concerns that are negatively impacting these services. One, targeted flexibility, school districts need for continuity of services. And two, federal funding and resources to help provide services to students with disabilities during this pandemic and beyond. And WASP and the National School Boards Association are urging Congress, urging board members to reach out to Congress for them to act swiftly on this. And per WASP, to take action, Ron Kind would be our, our congressman, for those interested in reaching out to make sure that this is, they're aware that this is, this is a problem during this pandemic. Just a couple of things, I know I mentioned, tomorrow in state news, legislative leaders released a joint statement to announce that an extraordinary session of the legislature will start Tuesday, April 14th, which is tomorrow, to take up legislation related to the pandemic. Copies of the legislation lawmakers will be taking up tomorrow. I checked about lunchtime and they didn't have any specific details in terms of what's on the docket tomorrow. But WASP urges you to check the Legislative Update blog for the latest news into the evening tomorrow and later this week for updates. And last thing I'll mention is Wednesday, April 15th is the canvas to certify our local election results, and that pending, pending the organization meeting in a couple of weeks, that that takes us to May, and we'll see, we'll see what's on the docket then.
Thank you for the report, Charles. We move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed. Second.
We have a motion and a second that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have a roll call, please, Maureen.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Ram?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Maureen, move on to new business, update on school closure due to coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic.
So I think throughout the course of what transpired prior to this evening, plus maybe two-thirds of what you heard in context of this meeting, is all due to the fact that we're in a midst of a pandemic and schools closed because of the COVID-19. And here we sit in a room, you know, six feet apart from one another and conduct board business, so the long-term ramifications of this, I think, are are still not clear. There's a number of things that that remain up in the air. I think that we were positioned uniquely well to transition fairly quickly with respect to communication to our students and parents. You folks have been provided, just like our parents and staff have, you know, periodic updates from myself and other administrators and staff members that you may know. And, you know, I'd love to sit here and tell you that we're doing everything right and everything's going great and it's not an issue, but of course, that's probably not true. But I have heard a number of positive commentary. We try to echo the sentiment and continue to echo the sentiment that this is about helping one another and being more customer service oriented versus accountability oriented. Some of the measures you acted on here this evening, I think, allow that to transpire more cohesively and it plays kind of a, a point of emphasis on that topic. And know that this is tough, it's beyond hard, and, you know, we're going to come through it. We're going to work together, which we've done, as I said on the radio this morning, and have said in a number of communications, our community, our students, parents, staff members, and you folks, everybody, has come together to make this situation, let's call it reasonably bearable. No one's losing their mind, everybody's remaining relatively calm, and we're working through this in as organized a fashion as possible. What's interesting in Troy's lead-in is outstanding, is that our legislature has taken no action on guidance with respect to what the, what the federal dollars and some of the federal actions mean to the state. And I'm not saying that to throw our state under the bus, I'm saying that as a fact. So a lot of the things that people are wondering about, we don't know, because there isn't legislation that outlines what you do or how you do it and when or where you do it. For school purposes, I think the big item is checked off the list with regard to the instructional minute waiver. Parents now realize that, you know, the impact of this, the ramifications of this are not going to be detrimental to their kids' schooling to such a degree that they have to repeat a grade or will not graduate high school, right? There are still underlying issues that we're looking at addressing. This experience has proven to me and many other people that, I think we knew this, but it's once again front and center. A school is so much more than just teaching kids stuff and As and Bs and Cs. Our staff members and community has stepped up in a significant degree to fill that void, but it's not the same. And I always had a hard time with summer, I never thought that those words would come out of my mouth as a student myself, but had a hard time with summer when you walk through a school building and you come into the office and you don't see kids and, you know, a number of people with the same regularity you do during the school year. And I always thought, well, you know, I mean, it's summer, big deal, it is what it is, and you do your thing and you kind of get into your normal vibe, and then school starts again, and lo and behold, everything's back to normal, as it were. And this is not a circumstance that's like summer. Maureen and I were just talking about this prior to tonight's meeting. There's more things happening and more work to do now for many of our staff, not of course across the board, but now than there is when we're doing normal school. And it's ironic, because you don't really feel like you're accomplishing much, and you're missing out some of the finer aspects of why these jobs, like a job like mine, for example, some people say, why would anybody want to do that? And some days I agree with that, but most days I think to myself, well, now I know why, and frankly, it has to do with people, right? And the fact that you can interact with a broad array of people, our staff, our kids, and our community members, and the number of things I have the pleasure and get to do, I'm allowed to do by virtue of my position, this closure has just solidified the fact that that's like what I need. I mean, that's a significant portion of what makes me me and makes me functional. And this, of course, is not just about me, of course, it's being played out over and over again in people's homes and what they're dealing with with their kids or their own jobs, in our, you know, for our own staff members. And, you know, lo and behold, we will continue to do what we do, and we're going to get through it, I think, with a proper tone of how can we help each other and how can we be better on the other end of this. With that said, there will be a district communication, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, that will be going out. Nothing earth-shattering or with any kind of broad ramifications, but, you know, getting the instructional minute waiver off the people's minds and, and taking care of some other business. And then also too, talking about, you know, hey, we want to keep kids engaged, and regardless if this closure goes until the end of April or the end of May or somewhere in between, it's really about keeping kids engaged and having them have some things to do, because that's where they generate relevance and worth, just like you and I generate relevance and worth from doing things and accomplishing things and being involved in things kids do as well. And I know from my own kids, and you probably know from kids or grandkids of your own or community members' kids, whatever the case is, that this isn't like summer for kids either. There's, there's not a parallel that we can point to to say, God, isn't this just great? I haven't heard one person say that, one human being say that in any regard. Nonetheless, whenever the call is made and we can return to school, I can assure you that we will do so, that our staff will be over the moon to get kids back in the buildings and be doing their thing, although I have no ability to tell you when that may be. I heard today, just recently, that we may be nearing a peak in Wisconsin with regard to the number of cases, which would mean the closer, the quicker you come to the peak, the closer you are to the down end and then potentially moving past that. But that is not accompanied with any kind of date, you know, some certain date that it's going to happen by, by now. I would anticipate that our governor will probably make another announcement regarding what we're doing, I'm guessing sometime relatively soon, within the next week or so, to give community members, employees, and everybody time to prepare for this to be kicked out another two weeks potentially, or, you know, it's possible, but I would, I'd be stunned if it was just lifted after April 24th and that we just go back to normal. Because I think we have quite a downturn yet to get on the other side of this hump before school would resume.
Well, the April 24th is the state, but the federal government came out and said April 30th. So I'm not sure if he has to adjust his date to that. So, I'm not sure if he has to adjust his date to that, you know, because the mandate from the federal government was April 30th.
Right.
And then as far as, like you said, the backside of it, I mean, talking to the people in the, but I know the medical community, they're saying May, middle of May before they would feel comfortable saying that we're past it. So, yeah, there's a lot of unfortunate out there, but I'd also like to add that our staff is doing some phenomenal things with these kids.
Absolutely.
I've talked to multiple elementary students or teachers that I know and asked them, how's it working? I mean, I kinda had questions, because my wife and I, we walk, we talk about that since she's a former teacher and says, I got it retired, but she said she don't know, she said this would drive her nuts, you know, this type of thing. But you see some of the stuff on Facebook and on the schools blog pages, I mean, if you go around and see these, you can tell where elementary kids are, because they all have hearts in their windows. So, that was a program of thinking originated that need and then they all kinda took it over. So, I mean, there's a lot of neat things going on in the community with our staff and our teachers, and I've seen multiple, multiple shots of our teachers getting together for their PLCs. And I've also seen, talked to one of the elementary and she's got this, and I don't know what the program is, because there's so many of them out there, but basically she can see all 30 kids or talk to them if they're online and get information and they can, and they can do a lesson. So, and they're doing it. And then I've seen, in the high school level, I've seen, Mary Beth Freeze had a couple posts with her students interacting and showing programs and actually showing their work through FaceTime and that type of thing and asking questions. So, there's a lot of good things going on. It's just unfortunate, it's an unfortunate time.
Think about where we would be if we don't have, didn't have the technology that we have today. If this was 30 years ago, how could you have a virtual classroom when people wouldn't be able to connect? So, fortunate in that aspect, uncharted waters.
Absolutely.
Okay. Item B, discussion and possible action to suspend Board Policy 151, Board Policy Development and Adoption for the Specific Purpose of Allowing the Newly Introduced Board Policy 189, Virtual Board Meetings in Emergency Situations to be Considered for First and Final Approval on the Same Date.
So, it's about as clear as I suppose it could be. A copy of Policy 151 is included for your reference, it was with your background information. We'd ask that you take action to suspend that policy so that we can introduce and potentially implement, of course, with your approval, Board Policy 189. 189, you might say, what does that mean? And what that allows for is remote participation by board members in circumstances, I'm going to say similar to this, but maybe let's take it a step further. If the governor or the state would say, look, folks, this is, everybody stays at home, there's no travel, aside from absolutely essential travel for things like healthcare or medications, or, you know, we're going to double-check anybody heading into the grocery store that you're actually buying more than a pack of gum and a bottle of Coke. That kind of level of draconian measure, shall we say, with regard to population control and the spread of a pandemic like we have now. We're not at that phase if we can socially distance like we're doing now and we have enough to have a quorum and still be, you know, responsibly doing business, then we're, of course, going to maintain that. But Policy 189 allows for that to transpire if a similar event would transpire that's a little bit more dire, let's call it, or let's say another sort of natural disaster. And I would argue, let's pretend our Monday board meeting followed that brutal storm that tore through here, and for whatever reason, we can't have every person here in attendance because it's, they can't get out of their development or out of their home. So, this would allow, in extraordinary circumstances, for people to utilize technology to engage in the board meeting. You can see it as a comprehensive policy. It's quite clear that it's only under these extraordinary circumstances that that policy would be in place, and that personal attendance, if possible, is the preferred method of conducting public business. But it's also speaks to the fact that people all need access to that same virtual interface. And typically, what we do is Google Meet or Zoom, and you probably, you may have done that with your family members and that kind of thing, but it would be, you know, a link would be provided that people would click in and we'd all click in too, whether we're here or in our homes, and we would conduct business remotely, where we could see all the board members and myself and Maureen on our grid screen and we'd handle it remotely. And all of the other nuances associated with that. And the other action would be that Policy 189 receives a first and final reading simultaneously so that it's implemented, because it wasn't too long ago, now that I'm hearing, we may be at the peak, Maureen and I had talked and other people and I had talked, it was entirely possible that tomorrow the governor issues an order and says, nope, no one's leaving their house, there's no essential, we're shutting down everything. I don't think that that's going to happen, but that could. And then the response is, okay, I'll have to re-convene our board meeting if we didn't take this action to allow this to take place. And there's not, of course, most things that need to be done in an emergency sort of fashion or immediate sort of fashion, but I think, of course, during a critical emergency, those are when those times are going to arise more than just the standard doing business. So, that's kind of Policy 151 suspension, as well as the implementation of Policy 189. And so, that's Items B and C, and I'd entertain any questions on either of those topics.
189 was developed by WASB?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, if nothing, I would make a motion to approve suspending Board Policy 151, Board Policy Development and Adoption for the Specific Purpose of Allowing the Newly Introduced Board Policy 189, Virtual Board Meetings in Emergency Situations to be Considered for First and Final Approval on the Same Date.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve suspending Board Policy 151, Board Policy Development and Adoption for the Specific Purpose of Allowing the Newly Introduced Board Policy 189, Virtual Board Meetings in Emergency Situations to be Considered for First and Final Approval on the Same Date. Do we have a roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Benham?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Ram?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes. Thank you, Maureen. Next.
And I would make a motion to approve New Board Policy 189, Virtual Board Meetings in Emergency Situations for First and Final Approval effective April 13th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve New Board Policy 189, Virtual Board Meetings in Emergency Situations for First and Final Approval effective April 13th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Item D, discussion and possible action on a request from Safeway Bus Transit to have the district continue paying the transportation company base rate for days in which bus service is halted due to the COVID-19 school closure, as well as a compensation request from Lamers Bus for 80% of the current AM, noon, PM billing for all scheduled school days in the academic calendar during the COVID-19 shutdown.
We're going to get two bus companies, Safeway and Lamers, on the line, because they wanted to be able to listen in on this part of the page.
(phone rings)
Hi, Teresa. Excuse me, it's Maureen, Board Secretary.
Hi.
How are you?
Mm-hmm, great, how are you?
Good, thank you. We have you in the meeting here to listen. I'm also going to, right now, conference in Tracy from Safeway, so if you'll just stand by, I'll get her on the line, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Tracy.
Well, Tracy, it's Maureen from the board meeting.
Hi.
I'm going, I'm going to have Teresa join us, and we are all going to be in the room together now, and you're going to be able to hear the board as they dialogue on the next topic.
Okay, can we comment in or no?
That would be up to John Krings, Board President, so I'll let him take over.
I think it's fine if you comment. It's noticed, so I don't see any real problem with comments.
So, I'll start the conversation for the sake of information, and Tracy and Teresa, can you hear me fine?
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay. So, there was a request, and you got this, board members received the request from both Lamers and Safeway in their supplementary board information. The agenda language indicates what we, what the requests were, and so that's clarified there in the agenda. And the subsequent conversation and some of the additional details were provided to board members as well, so they have some knowledge of what the circumstances are. The biggest rub, and this is not, for me, a debate to say we shouldn't be all in this together and we shouldn't help particularly local companies and local contractors through a difficult time. But the biggest rub is that, right now, the CARES Act and its ramifications are not 100% clear with respect to what it means to pay contractors and to what degree. And here's what I mean when I say that. First off, we, as a public entity, are not eligible for many CARES Act dollars necessarily, because, again, we're publicly funded via taxpayer dollars. One of the things that I will emphasize is that some of what we're doing is as a result of our public dollars being observed as kind of stimulus dollars. There is some terminology in the CARES Act that does say districts should, as practicable, continue to pay contractors. What's not clear, and I've solicited opinions from our school district attorney, Bob Burns, from the board, WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Board Attorney, Bob Butler, as well as been provided, commentary by Mike Jolka, who's an attorney for Boardman &amp; Clark, who does some work with CISA V as a collaborative superintendent's group. And all three of them have indicated that there's not a problem with taking some action and making payments towards contractors. However, it's not clear as of now, and they would recommend holding off until it becomes more clear about what the impact of the CARES Act is, and then how, of course, we should proceed. The reason being, if there is some dollars that we send the way of the contractor, is that going to jeopardize our access to CARE Act dollars in the future? That's not known at this time. The opposite direction, if we provide payment to the contractor, does that jeopardize them from receiving CARE Act dollars in some capacity? At this stage, from the information that I have, that is also not clear. And I'm going to circle back to the first thing that I said when Tracy and Teresa, you were not on the phone at the time, it was part of other board conversation, but our state has not yet met, our legislature has not yet met to identify what the local or the state-based rules will be around these CARE Act dollars and their distribution and so forth and so on. So, I say all that by saying I absolutely, totally, and completely, as I said in my email, understand where you're coming from as a private contractor, needing to run buses and routes and employ people, hopefully sooner than later, at very least, next fall. You're going to need bus drivers, you're going to need school buses, and so some of these things don't stop. I personally, this is a personal opinion, am not averse to helping through that process. I think that that would make sense to me. But in what form and in what capacity, at this stage right now, is a question mark with regard to how the CARES Act rolls into this and what we can or should do. With that being said, our legal counsel, Bob Burns, and I spoke last week. We are going to speak again, based on some of your direction here tonight as well, about what is a reasonable and prudent way to proceed. I would also say that some of this may, in quotation marks, become more clear as this extraordinary session wears on and the legislature develops some rules, as it were, some statutes around what's going to happen here in the state of Wisconsin, or it may not be addressed and we may be in the same boat. But nonetheless, I think in the next week or so, week or two, some of these things would hopefully become more clear. So, that's the background information I wanted to provide to you.
Well, I've had multiple calls on this, and I have some concerns about the fact that we need to, well, not concerns, I feel strongly we need to support our partners. I mean, the two bus carriers are our biggest partners in educating our kids and getting our, basically by getting our kids to school. My concerns are, is, and as a businessman that had some issues because of new page doing Chapter 11 and took me for some, a large amount of money, you still have to pay bills. I mean, I had to still pay bills for that money that they weren't going to pay me in these bus companies. I did, after I got some, a couple of calls, I did talk to Tracy and I talked to, can't remember the gentleman at Lamers briefly, about what their costs are, and, you know, basically, they still have bus payments to make, they still have insurance to make, they still have unemployment insurance to pay, they have other things that will be going on along with, if we go in the fall, with new routing and that type of thing. So, they still have expenses to pay. So, then I did also ask about what are other school districts doing? Are they actually doing it? And both of them replied to me that they are, most of the other school districts have made resolutions that they are going to pay the standard rate to bus companies during this unusual time. So, I have some concerns, and I don't know, and when I read the motion and the information, I have some concerns about how long we're talking about. I mean, we need to make a decision. We have people that are affected. I got calls from bus drivers, I got calls from a businessman that I think he didn't really, it was an unknown call and he didn't want to give me his name, but it sounded like it was a banker or somebody in the financial, but he didn't want to, he didn't want to give me a detail of who he was, which, you know, I give him credit, because at least he didn't just anonymous, anonymously send me information. So, I don't know if it's because I'm on Business Services that I got these calls, I don't know if any of you got calls, but I do have concerns about it, that we may have to, I mean, we have to act, we have to do something for our partners, because unfortunately, they still have bills to pay, and if they don't get their bills paid, they could go bankrupt.
I guess.
And then we would be, let me just finish my statement, then we would be scrambling for carriers in the fall to bus our kids, so there are issues.
I wonder if you could comment to the fact that they're, when they say that the funds that are, they're already budgeted and available, so if we have these funds budgeted and available, is that because of the way that would impact if this CARES?
No. So, as with any school district budget, our expenditures and revenues are pretty much set for the entirety of the school year. And just like last year, if we didn't bus eight days because of closure, then those dollars are typically used elsewhere. And in that regard, we did make some attempts at making the bus company whole because of the crazy amount of closures we had last year. So, we have done that in the past. The rub, however, and the difference, is that some of this, again, I'm not, I'm not arguing that we should do something, because I think we should. The problem is that the legal opinion currently is to hold off until we know more about what the impact is, and that we're not putting ourselves or the bus companies in a position that they're in violation of some kind of, you know, statute or obligation that we have. Because I think identifying what we're paying for and what those dollars are contributing to, and how that works with the CARES Act, is a question that auditors are going to ask, and then, and ultimately, people have to answer those questions. In some cases, it's us that has to answer those questions, in some cases, it's the private contractor. And frankly, our concern is about the questions we have to answer, right? And the private contractors would have to, would have to answer those questions themselves. Again, I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything, I get it. I mean, we're paying folks to stay home, for folks that, you know, want to pare this down to the bare minimum. Our staff are working, but staff members are also collecting pay to, you know, during this closure, because of the same thing that's being articulated, which is, we can't conceivably hire 260 support staff members, for example, if school were to resume in two weeks or even in September. So, I get it. I'm not debating any aspect at all. And my recommendation to table this is to simply wait for clarity from the CARES Act and what that means, and I don't know, John, when you say how long, I have no clue, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I mean, my hope would be in the next couple of weeks. Is it possible that it's not until the next couple of months? It's possible. And I think anytime, you know, you have to wait for revenue is a tough time. And I, trust me, I get it about as good as I probably can. We are beholden to what we receive in revenue as well. You can't, you know, steal from Peter to pay Paul, kind of. You can't, you know, steal from Peter to pay Paul kind of approach, and those, you know, so the finality of budgets, of course, are not lost on me. I don't want to get down a path with the district that says, here's what we did, and then, oh, by the way, this wasn't the right thing to do, so now you've got some problems on your hands. As I said, I'm going to work with our legal counsel. He can develop, you know, information about his interpretation of our statutory obligations and what we do moving forward, because again, I do think it makes sense to be a responsible community partner, but not at the cost of some potential other issues with regard to newly patched legislation that's not even clarified yet at the state level. It is clear that they want us to pay the contractors. That's quite clear. What's practicable is not clarified, and in what context is not clarified. Because you may be in violation, so for example, let's take it at its face, and we agree to pay 100% of what we would have paid had kids been in school. Let's pretend that that's a scenario. That may jeopardize our ability to get CARES Act dollars because of some clause we're not aware of. That may jeopardize our bus contractors' ability to get CARES Act dollars because, lo and behold, we're paying for drivers who, you know, we shouldn't have been paying for, and, you know, now they can't get the benefit of the, see what I'm saying? I don't want to put ourselves primarily and our contractors in a position where something like that happens. Is the dollars budgeted for? Yes. Is this the time that we're talking about saving money and not spending money? No. However, I will point to, I'm not advocating for doing this, but there are boards that are not taking action on this and are not paying bus contractors and other organizations for a variety of reasons, one primarily being budget issues. Because what will probably happen is that our budget will be negatively impacted next year as they go through what the ramifications are financially of this budget, of this pandemic, pardon me, having implications to next year's budget, which is already set. But the legislature will convene and act on that and probably pull dollars back from everybody, us included, and have some impact there. So some thought process is, woo geez, let's not spend any money, let's put it in fund balance, and then we'll have access to it next year when we're getting kicked in the rear end. I'm not even advocating for that, because I think that's also a little bit of a short sided approach. What I'm advocating for is wait until we have clarity so that we're not doing anything incorrect. That's my primary concern. If you folks all say, pay the bus contractors, well, we would have paid them if kids were in school, that is absolutely what we'll do. I got no problem with it. I'll do it with a smile on my face, it doesn't hurt my feelings in the least, because I think it's legit. I mean, people have bills to pay and employees to keep. There's no part of me that can debate that. But again, timing makes a big, a big difference, in my opinion.
Well, I strongly think we need to act on it eventually, whether it be this or within if we have to call a special meeting. And I'm not saying that we've, you know, I mean, I've, I've talked to them about levels, and I've asked both Tracy and, I can't remember the gentleman's name, I talked to him, I am at, right now, but a lot of districts are paying 80, 85, 90%. Not all of them are paying 4%, so I mean, it depends on the district and how they feel.
Some are paying 65, some are paying 50. Locally, I know that Nacousinport Edwards are in the same boat we're in right now. They're having similar conversations at the same, at the same time. I went back and reviewed because CISA V did a survey late March. That was prior, though, to anybody really saying, yep, we're paying our people. You know, we're paying our contractors, I should say. It was more like a feeler, like, hey, what are you guys going to do? And it was all, well, we're going to talk about it. That's pretty much what the limiting responses were. I do know Bearaboo is paying like, I want to say 85%. That's a district that is. And there's a couple other, there's absolutely other districts that are. Locally here, Southwood County, I don't believe any districts are, until some of these things get clarified. But again, they could be engaged in board conversations as we speak, so.
Well, I would, I would like to pay them too, but I would like to know legally what we, what we can do, so I guess I would like to wait until we, I can hope it's not two months and only two weeks.
And are there other local businesses that will, that come forward and other contractors that we deal with maybe on a lesser scale, but there's still people that are dependent on school district dollars for their business? Probably not 100%, but there's a, when you go through our monthly bills and payments and you look at some of the payments that are made, they're rather substantial local businesses that I'm sure aren't getting that now either, because we don't have students in the classroom.
Most of that is purchased or contracted services, like painting and repairs and H-pack and that type of.
Right. Well, I mean, so think of it this way, let's pretend that we didn't contract for busing, that we owned our buses and employed our drivers, right? We'd be paying for the bus payments, if we had any, we'd be paying for insurance, we'd be paying potentially our drivers, or we'd put them on unemployment because they get actually more money on unemployment through the CARES Act too. We'd be weighing the pros and cons there. But very clearly, as you well know, there's costs to doing business. I mean, we don't have kids and staff in any one of our facilities, but you got to put money and make sure that they're still operational for when that happens. So I think the underlying commentary, and I have to say, the reason my voice is raised is I just want to ensure that the people on the phone are hearing it. I'm not howling at anybody, I'm not angry or upset. I'm a passionate guy, I do like being loud. But the, you know, the approach being that there's existing expenses that don't go away because school is closed. I buy into that 100%, that's guaranteed. And to what degree, and what does that mean in terms of additional, you know, subsidies or stimulus dollars, whatever you want to refer to that on, that's what we're awaiting the clarity on. And I'd have a different opinion if I could find one legal counsel that would say, well, here's a formula you can use and then go for it because it does make sense. Barring that, I think you got to, you know, basically make your decision based off of what we have available to us now. First thing tomorrow is going to be a conversation with Bob Burns about, hey, you know, what are you hearing, what do we need to do? I can almost guarantee he's going to say, I don't know yet. And then the other piece that's going to happen is the extraordinary session that takes place, they may clarify that. And I also, Tracy, for reference, shared the communication with Pat Heston that you had. You, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. And followed up with that kind of commentary as well. I know that Representative Krug's office said more along the lines of, woo geez, you know, hold up a second because I'm not sure that we know quite yet what that means. And he alluded to what I'm saying, which is, they haven't even met yet to talk about, what does this mean now here in Wisconsin with how these are distributed, who has access to them, and under what conditions do they have access to them? I do believe that's going to be clarified here in the next, I'm going to say several days, I don't think this is a two-month thing. I think it's in the next week or two. It depends on how quickly they go through this CARES Act and if they even articulate public schools and bus contractors or contractors, I'm inclined to think that they're going to. That guidance then would help us as people come to the table, as it were, that would inform us about what we do with contractor XYZ for a different service. Because right now, there isn't any guidance on what that looks like. And if the guidance is 80%, 85%, 90, 100, I don't, you know, whatever, it's not about the dollars, in my opinion, because as is articulated, the dollars have been budgeted, and we're going to spend them one way or the other. Otherwise, you know, we end up with a negative impact long-term on our finances as well. But we still have to make certain that we're not going to further jeopardize our potential auditing issues or our potential kick at the can with respect to CARES dollars that we may be accessible to.
Okay, so if we were to table it for now, and we find out within like a week or so what's going on with this, would we have another meeting, or would we wait until our next monthly meeting to act on that, or how long, or?
Well, technically, because we have a contract with the bus company, and the contract spells out what those specifics are. If our attorney, in conjunction with myself, develop something that we feel is appropriate, protects the district in the appropriate fashion, and the contractors agree to it, and we sign off on it, I don't believe it would require board action. I think you could be updated on that topic. You've already taken action to say, pay for our transportation, our bus, you know, for 180 days or 175 days at this rate. And if it's under that rate, and we are know we're compliant with the statute, and it's done in consultation with our attorney, I don't believe it would require a special meeting necessarily. You may say, we want to be back here, or we want to approve whatever goes down. But I believe ultimately, legally, it would be okay either way. One of the reasons it's here before you tonight is just like we talked about, this is a complex issue. This isn't just me saying, yep, we'll do this. I'm not comfortable doing that for the reasons that I share here tonight. But if we know that our attorney says, yep, here's what's allowable, and here's what you can do, we can absolutely facilitate that without a special meeting. But you could say, we want to, we want to know what's going on, and we want to approve before anything goes out the door in that regard, and then, of course, we would have a special meeting.
Reorg, we have a reorg meeting.
Yeah, and we do also have reorg on the 27th, so that's not too terribly far away. But if we found out tomorrow, could we meet on Thursday? Absolutely. If we found out Thursday, can we meet on Tuesday, as long as you guys are available? Absolutely. So it wouldn't be an act of God to have us come together again. And if we find out something in a week or so, and it makes sense to add it to the 27th agenda, then we add it to the 27th agenda of the board reorg meeting, yeah.
Is it possible to get a breakdown of expenses? Because I see Lammers, you know, is comfortable with 80%, but Safeway is looking at 100%.
I don't think it says that you're looking for 100%.
Well, there's no percent there, the other one has 80%, so I'm assuming if it's not enumerated on less than 100, that it's asking for 100.
May I comment on this?
Sure.
I didn't put down any amount on there. What I said is I'm asking for the district's help at this situation, at this time. What I also looked at and broke down is taking out the driver wages out of that, which then, if you look at that number, is about 80% of what our base rate would be. So it's about the exact same as Lammers. And that's how we both looked at it, is by taking what we would have gotten minus the driver wages gives you about 80% of our base rate.
Are your drivers eligible for unemployment?
Our drivers, yes, they can collect unemployment.
Okay, because is there not that when the unemployment comes through, that they're going to be getting an extra $600 a week?
Correct.
Okay. And all your drivers would be eligible?
We don't know that yet. Do you guys have any idea if you're going to, if summer school's even a thought? This is just another question thrown at you.
No, not this time.
I don't think that's going to be our decision to make. I think that'll be dictated at the state or federal government level when we can open the schoolhouse doors.
Okay.
Yep. If we can hold it, we'll be ready to go. But yeah, I don't know, I don't know that anybody knows that right now.
We got to have drivers back, and we got to get our buses in order, and we got to get the routes made up. So if summer school is a possibility, we even need a lot of work to do yet, which I don't have anybody here.
Well, Tracy, you and I can talk about the, because ultimately, if you said to me, we can't run buses for summer school, then we're not having summer school. There's no human being that can make the decision right now if we're having summer school or not. The governor has to tell us what's going to happen at the state level, the president has to tell us what's going to happen at the national level, and even if I wanted to hold summer school in June, we may not be able to. So I don't know how to answer, there's not a school district that I'm aware of that said, yep, we're going to go in June, or in fact, no, we're not. I don't think making any of those calls right now is wise.
Well, I think we're going to get an answer from the state sooner rather than later, but they're starting the special session tomorrow. And I think, you know, every school district is looking at this problem, I think it's going to be addressed by them. So I think we should wait until we hear from them, and we can get a clarification on this potential aid for us and for them. I don't think it's going to be longer than a week or two, really. I wouldn't want to jeopardize money for us, and I wouldn't want to jeopardize money for them.
I agree with that, but I think we also, I think we also should have some sort of understanding that we need to help these people out.
I agree, I know, I think we all agree.
That's right, I just want to make sure we have that understanding.
That's never been a debate out of my office.
Are there any more questions or comments?
I guess I'd like to know if we, I guess if Lammers and/or Safeway could provide Maureen with some contractors that have already, or not contractor, school districts that have already said they were going to pay, and at what rate, and it would be helpful just to have some of that information. So if you could get that information to Maureen, you don't need to go through it right now?
Yeah, John, I can, I did get some from Kevin Lammers, actually, and he got it from an administrator of some of the districts in the area, so I can definitely get that to Maureen tomorrow. Do you want some of them now? I mean, I do have some of the names and percentages now.
No, don't need that now, just if you get it to Maureen, that would be.
Sure, no problem.
Was not CISA V doing another polling of districts to see what was happening? Because we just had a meeting like a week ago.
I talked to Jeremy about it this afternoon because I thought that same thing, and he said, well, nope, I haven't done that second follow-up yet. I could ask him to.
I, I thought he indicated from that meeting he was.
Well, we did, he did one, end of March, I would say, is the 23rd or 24th, but no one knew anything at that time. It was kind of like, yeah, we're, we're talking about it. It's pretty much what everybody's response was.
I would suggest he do another one.
Yeah.
And he's got all the districts, so it should be, you know, pretty relative.
I'll, I'll shoot him a text or an email before I leave tonight.
And I guess, yeah, it makes a big difference. Does it make a big difference in school districts employing the people and owning the buses? Do we need to know that when we look at this kind of, well, I don't know.
I think the only difference is that the costs are finite and completely, you know, when you work with a private contractor, I'm not saying this to be disparaging, but it's not 100% visible, right? You don't have, like, you know exactly all the dollars in and dollars out with owning buses and fuel costs and driver costs and, you know, there is, but no, it wouldn't be any different. That's part of why this is a conversation at all, is because it's not different. We need buses and drivers, and we're going to come back to school, whether it's in two weeks, or June, or September. And I get that Safeway, Lammers, and any other bus contractor in the state can't be in a circumstance where they're rehiring their entire workforce, and then, you know, I don't know, three months behind on loans for buses that they've paid for and insurance, I mean, I get it, you know, I totally get it. But again, we should base that in what we know with regard to our statutory obligations and what the CARES Act actually covers and doesn't cover, and how those things meld together. Because I guarantee you, we'll be audited on this. And I guarantee you, it's not going to be with the same kind of, eh, don't worry about it, it's just federal stimulus, that, that, that is, no, those words are not uttered for school districts, as all of you folks are keenly aware. There's no utterance that says, don't worry. So we, I just need, I want to make sure our ducks are to row before we go down that path. And I firmly believe we will, in some capacity. I firmly believe we will, and I'm not debating that at all. In fact, I'm very supportive of that. But I think it has to be done in the right context. Oh, so if, let's pretend that in the next few days, it becomes clear, and in consultation with the attorney, we come up with some agreement, would you all prefer a special meeting if something like that were to take place and we reconvene? If it's close enough to the 27th, we'll use the 27th. If it's the day after the 27th, we'll, we'll do a special meeting, or if it's, you know, by the end of the week, maybe even a special meeting to get it on the docket for next. Fair enough?
Are there any other questions or comments?
Need the motion to table?
I think so.
We would, if that's your choice.
I move, I motion, I make a motion to table the request from Safeway Bus Transit Incorporated and Lammers Bus for continued compensation during the days of shutdown due to the COVID-19 pandemic until more information becomes available.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to table requests from Safeway Bus Transit Incorporated and Lammers Bus for continued compensation during days of shutdown due to the COVID-19 pandemic until more information becomes available. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We can move on to item E.
Do we want to ask them if they want to leave the meeting?
Oh, would you like to leave the meeting now on the phone?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Okay, item E, discussion and possible action to approve an application for the 2020-21 Lincoln High School Building Trade Homes Construction Project.
You want to talk about the Trade Home Committee, John?
Sure. As far as our original information packet that we got, we had five people interested in the trade home process, however, due to, I'm thinking, COVID-19 and a couple of, not, or two of them really didn't fit into what we were looking for, for that type of house. Only one ended up submitting all of the information that we needed to consider them, so. Only one ended up submitting all of the information that we needed to consider them, so it made our meeting really quick, and we have approved the trade home for Matthew and Amanda Wallach for the construction of a home for the 2021 Lincoln High School Trade Homes Construction Class. And the house will be located just out on the other side of the Southwood County Park by the boat landing, one block before there, there's a new subdivision going in. They just cleared out the subdivision in the road and there's a cul-de-sac on the end, and that's where the house will be being built. Ironically, the people who are currently living on the corner of 64th and Alcar, which is right on that corner, and they're basically going to be moving about two blocks.
If you look at the aerial map, there's some, I think some maps included, it's a really cool piece of property because it's at the, at the backside of this, what do you call it, the cul-de-sac that they put in. So it's like, going to be the only thing, it's kind of a neat place. It's going to be the only thing back there, as it were.
So for this year's trade homes house, are they going to be able to complete it mostly?
Yes.
They did see a report that, you know, they were trying to keep the numbers of students there working below 10, and so they were still working, but.
And they've had no problem with that. There's been, according to Terry, three to five kids that have showed up fairly religiously on their own volition with parent permission. And construction is one of the few industries that has been totally like, nope, you guys do what you need to do. But they, we didn't want to put any kids at, excuse me, at risk, of course, so nothing required, no impact to grades, or nothing mandatory, but there is a small crew of three to five folks that continue work. And I think Terry said they pretty much expect to be done on time.
Yeah, they do. They were doing siding during the nice days, and said everything's going fairly well considering. And he says, the nice thing that he did like about it is that he's able to work with these, and it's a little, four to five kids that have been coming every day. And he said, we've been working with them and I've been able to teach them more and show them more and get them involved more, and actually, they're doing a lot more hands-on stuff than when he has a couple dozen kids there, or a dozen kids there, I mean.
So four to five versus 17 or 18.
Yeah. So he, he's enjoying that, he really is.
We'll need a motion over.
Yes.
So I would make a motion to approve the application for Matthew and Amanda Wallach for construction of a home by the 2021 Lincoln High School Building Trade Homes Construction Class.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application for Matthew and Amanda Wallach for construction of a home by the 2020-21 Lincoln High School Building Trades Home Construction Class. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, do we have any updated employee appointments, resignation, or retirement requests?
We do not.
All right.
Sorry.
No problem.
No, we don't.
So with that, we move on to the calendar. Wednesday is the board election campus meeting at 3:00 p.m.